So I'd like to call to order the regular meeting at the Board of Trustees in Canton on July 27, 2021 at 6:04 PM. So Clerk Seagrist, please take role.
Trustee Borninski.
Good evening, everyone. I am at my mother's house in Cambridge, Massachusetts tonight.
Foster.
Good evening from Canton Township.
Ganguly.
Good evening. I'm here at my home in Canton Township.
Graham Hudak.
Good evening. I'm here in Canton Township.
Seagrist is in attendance at Canton. Treasure Slavens is going to be excused from this meeting. And Trustee Snyderman.
I am here in Canton Township.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Clerk Seagrist, please take roll call on the motion.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
I.
Seagrist, I. Snyderman.
I.
Borninski.
I.
Agenda is adopted. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for July 13, 2021?
Moved.
Support.
Clerk Seagrist, please take a roll call on the motion.
Assuming there are no modifications. Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Seagrist, I. Snyderman.
I.
Borninski.
I.
Foster.
I.
Minutes approved on July 13. Now, public comment. Do we have any public comment? You can raise your hand. If you're an attendee, I don't see any phones. So just, everybody is on Zoom. Any public comment? Any public comment? I don't see any public comment. Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Support.
Clerk Seagrist, please take a roll call on the motion.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Seagrist, I. Snyderman.
I.
Borninski.
I.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Payment of the bills approved. Thank you. So our next item on the agenda is a presentation by Director Jade Smith on the five-year roads plan. He can introduce his team and start.
Yeah, I've got Bill Surcheck here with me from Engineering. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen and then I'm gonna introduce the five-year roads plan and then I'm gonna hand over to Bill to kinda talk about the historical data within the plan and looking forward five years. Let's see if I can share my screen here. Okay.
Is everyone seeing the whole screen? I see like two slides. Do you guys see two slides?
There we go. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, so I've been working with, as we all know, the the millage was passed back in 2018. And over the course of the last six or so months, we've been working on putting together a five-year road plan to better organize ourselves and budget ourselves to move forward with priorities and present to the Board of Trustees and then also inform the public of how we're going to move forward with this with with the road projects. A little bit of background for those that are in attendance, this is a 20-year millage. It was passed in 2018. Currently, it generates approximately $5.6 million per year. And below are the goals that were established when the millage was passed, which is pavement preservation, planning for major road programs. We commit approximately 15% to the Ford Road Boulevard project, 55% to major road projects, and 30% to residential road projects. So currently, we're in the third year of the program. The major road repairs began in 2019 and residential road repairs began in 2020 after we started that process of accepting the applications from the various associations. What we really wanna talk about today is the five-year plan moving forward. I probably should back up just a second and say that I did send out a pretty lengthy document yesterday. That's the, an all-inclusive five-year roads plan that has some historical data going back to 1985 with road projects that have been conducted within the township along with some projections in regards to the budget going out to 2026. And this is gonna, this is meant to be a working document that will be updated every year with the budget and with the next year's road projects. So as we head into 2022 and approve those projects, we will then add on to to the end of it and create a 2027 year that we will continue to do year after year throughout the course of the millage. One of the important things that I think has come out of this, and when we were talking, is is creating a document that is, I guess for lack of a better term, blessed by the Board of Trustees so that we can actually communicate and plan with the other entities such as Wayne County, who actually has the jurisdiction of most of the roads in the township and as well as MDOT. Because some of the things we are looking at are intersection projects, which may include roads such as Michigan Avenue. And with that, obviously, MDOT would be included in that in that conversation. And obviously, that comes down to funding opportunities too. So as we go through this and we see that this is this is the direction we're gonna head and we see possible opportunities to sit down and negotiate with Wayne County in regards to extra dollars that could be attributed to a certain project. This is a document that we can then provide to them to say, this is a formal document that, yes, this is our plan, and put some sort of IGA in place if through the negotiation process with the Executive's Office. So that's a little bit of a precursor. Again, we're not gonna go through the entire document. I did send that out to everybody. We will post that after, this is in draft format right now. Once we get through tonight and if there's any questions or adjustments that we need to make to it, we will post it on our website and our roads page for the for the public to see. And it will really truly give us a roadmap for the next five years and how we're gonna proceed. So I am going to now turn it over to to Bill to discuss the next actions, which is, well, I'll let him go ahead and explain it, but Bill Surcheck from Engineering is with us.
Oh, yeah. The, as you would expect, the 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 battle plans get thrown out as soon as they contact the battlefield. So this is already out of date. I can tell you, just as Jade and Anne Marie know, there have been some changes and issues with 275 going on. But I wanna walk through the five years we've planned in here. The the idea of this map here is to show essentially projects that are in the works or completed in the blue. And then we have green projects that are shown as future projects over the next five years and this year and in future years. So the idea here is we know that we have the Boulevard likely coming in, I would say, 24 at the earliest. That would make a presumption that Dan's Excavating is able to finish the 275 job in 23. They have made a proposal to the state. Anne Marie attended that meeting, I think it was about a week or two ago. And so if that occurs, that would be great. 275 would be finished and the early early start would be the Ford Road Boulevard in 24. So that is shown in green here. And then the other green areas are projects we would like to do within within that zone. And mostly, we're focusing on projects that are within the zone around Ford Road. We have, as you see by all the blue around Ford Road, we we've been really trying to get the detour routes along Ford, both north and south, in good shape. We want them to be in good shape once we have our detours for two years on the Boulevard. So that's been our focus. That's that red detour zone sign, that that line that surrounds the detour area. So we've made a lot of progress. We're actually, if we can get Warren done west of Hagerty, that would be a great thing to do. That's targeted for next year. So this is a map we wanted to use to show future projects for the next five years in green. And the other thing that's that we've put on here are intersection projects that are certainly in the works and have been discussed for a number of years. I know that's the goal of the Board. And we have, I'm retaining a consultant to look at four of the key intersections that if you go through the five-year plan, we start to look at doing detailed design and work with the state on some of the key intersections. So that's what this map shows. And if you look at the amount of blue on there, we really have a, we've accomplished a lot. And also have to thank the county. They've done some work on Cherry Hill, the long-awaited two-and-a-half-mile Cherry Hill construction is almost over. So Jade, if you wanna go through, we can just talk year by year, what we've got planned right now.
Yeah, and I and I guess one more comment as we go through this, and it would be the hopes that when we get done today, that we, no, we can't vote on this tonight, but it's to get any sort of feedback in regards to the five-year plan, because it's gonna allow us to do some greater planning on our end and get these projects designed and bid in a more timely manner. That way, we get the bids back in the middle of the winter and can hit the ground running first thing in the spring. So there is a little method to our madness as, you know, by presenting this tonight so we can get get on the design phase and get these bid out and get them back quick as possible. So if you wanna go ahead and, Bill?
Oh, yeah, sure. We, yeah, it would be great to get both of the the first two years to to be approved, given that we may have to shift depending on where the county is with some of their priorities. But the first year, we we just show Canton Center forward to Warren. We have about three and a half million on that. It's certainly a project that's been brewing for a long time. We've had a lot of high hopes to get county commitments and that is still in the works. But I, we're planning to do it. We'll do that. I would like to get the design approved, even if it gets bumped, but I I just don't see any way. We can't do it next year. We do have, there is some potential for other funding mechanisms, but that's in there as the main project. It's mostly a full reconstruct on the northbound and partial reconstruct on the southbound. There is actually some fairly good good stretch of the road there that don't need to come out. It it can be done in a season, easily. The other big project is Warren Hagerty to Lily. The fire station is finally done. We're actually accomplishing a little bit of work out there right now near the fire station. And this would basically give that section a good a good base and then an overlay. So that's, that's it for the next year. And then in 23, we're looking at Lily, US 12 Palmer. We have the new bridge. We have a significant amount of pavement that can be reused at this point. And we, this one is really based on a Pacer rating and a an issue of not wanting this to go any further. If we go much further, it probably would be a lot more expensive to reconstruct. So Lily is is a classic, you know, let's try to get that done before it completely falls apart. And the new bridge is is great. And that's one that we wanna really look at what kind of gaps we can fill. We have a gap program that'll be hopefully discussed in the next few months. And, you know, that's a, that's an area that has a lot of gaps, a lot of residential. And we like to get down to that bridge. Assume, assume Phase 1. Phase 1 is essentially the projects we can do prior to the Boulevard. So if you go through the report, just to explain what that means, Phase 1 is work prior to construction of the Boulevard. So anything we could we could fit in. Phase 2 is during the Boulevard. That would be later, a few years from now. And then Phase 3 is work after. So we kinda divided it that way. The other two projects for 23, Hagerty, Warren, Joy. The jury's out on that. It will be a detour route, certainly for the 275 project still in 23. And there may be some construction traffic issues on that section of Hagerty, which preclude us from using it or trying to repair it at this point. And we wouldn't wanna repair that section of Hagerty now that we know 275 is going, going to be using it. The other project for 23 is actually Lott's Palmer to US 12. This is a road that is not considered a primary road by the county. It is we all consider a fairly major road. It's an important north-south route. And it's in pretty decent shape in many areas. And, you know, we could hit it with a good base repair and resurfacing and get it, get it many more years of life. So the next year, now we're getting into a little more speculative. We're probably into, we may be into the Boulevard at this point in 24. So that's the assumption, is that we're starting the Boulevard in 24. So we wanna have projects that are away from the Boulevard. We're kinda, we're done with the area where the detours are and we flee to the west. Essentially, we have Sheldon, US 12 to the border, which we have contemplated for a number of years. We've actually done some preliminary engineering on that. It's a difficult area. It has a lot of residential to the east. And the drainage is very poor. It is an industrial area and it is a primary, it is now a county primary road. So this one would be a significant project with some drainage improvements. And if you know any of the residents in that area in the dirt roads to the to the west, any improvements we could do along Sheldon would would definitely help their their issues. And they have, they have many drainage issues in there. The other projects are Beck, which is a significant project. Lengthwise, it takes you all the way from Cherry Hill to to Michigan Avenue. And it's not in awful shape, but this is the time to hit those areas that are in, starting to fail. Same with Geddes. The other project contemplated in 24. Geddes Road is in decent shape. The Geddes-Beck intersection was just recently redone. But there's areas of Geddes that could could definitely use rehabilitation. And we're about three years from now, so these are not as specific. You know, the other thing that comes into Geddes Road is looking at the intersection south of Geddes, Sheldon, and Michigan. So the next year in 25, we also are assuming we are moving to the west. This one has a fairly significant rehabilitation on Canton Center, all the way from Palmer down to Michigan Avenue. There are a number of issues along there. There's a lot of good sections, actually. Section north of Palmer is holding up very well after, I wanna say, 14 years. That section is is a very good section. And the new piece on Canton Center is in good shape. But that that includes a fair amount of work. We're also contemplating in 25, Salts Road. Salts Road in this area is approaching 15 years old. So it is about time to do some rehabilitation. It's a two-mile section. It was all built at once a number of years ago. And by 25, and we may, you know, we may move, move some of these ideas up. By 25, I'm contemplating, we have one of these intersections done, and we have a design that that we can apply. So I put a million dollars in there. The, we'll go over the several intersections at the end here. And then I think 26 is the last year. We have Cherry Hill, working in the west. Certainly, by by this time, the Boulevard should be started. I would, I could not imagine it is not already finished by then. But essentially, these are projects out into the west, Cherry Hill, which is easily 20 years or more, a certain area. And then we have sections of Denton and hopefully another intersection by that time. So the further out you go, the less certain you can be. But that's what we've laid out for five years. And then I think, do we have a slide on intersections? I don't recall.
No, we don't.
Okay. So that's, that's the idea. Intersections, just so you know, are Ford and Beck, very difficult intersection with north-south issues. As I mentioned before, Geddes and Sheldon and US 12, a very difficult intersection. And Michael, as you know, the one of the first settlers, Tim Sheldon, put up his bar at that corner almost 190 years ago and started Canton, right? The bar, I don't think, is there anymore. But that intersection is probably our most difficult. The other ones we have on the map, we have lots of Palmer, which I have requested warrant study from the county in the past. I do not believe they have done one. We also contemplate, let me think, Sheldon and Palmer is a big one. Everyone knows Sheldon and Palmer has some issues with the drain right next to it. And as I said before, I think Ford and Beck. We also have on there a potential for a roundabout. I don't think it's on the map, but there is an idea that we have a roundabout potential to design one. It would be the first roundabout in the county. The county has been resistant to a roundabout, but the ideal place would be Salts, Denton, and Ridge. The geometrics are done. It's a difficult parcel, but that may be one that that we wanna look at in design also. So there's a lot, a lot of work to do.
Okay, thanks, Bill. So that's a real high level. I didn't wanna go into too much detail because it seems like we've gone through the history of the roads in the millage numerous times. But I do wanna make one note that we did meet with the Road Advisory Committee. Both Anne Marie, Michael, and Summer were a part of that meeting. I think it was a good conversation that came out and that we made a few changes to the to the document that you have. But I I really would like to get some feedback from the Board in regards to thoughts on the projects moving forward, especially in the next couple of years. As Bill said, years three, four, and five, there's a lot that can change. The Boulevard could get moved up. The county could throw in a couple extra projects or change their 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 projects, which could then influence ours. But from a planning perspective, we have to have some sort of plan so we can stay organized and complete these projects in a timely manner, especially with the the millage dollars in hand. So looking for any feedback, questions, comments, concerns?
Kate?
Thanks. Bill, I was at the meeting with Anne Marie about the I-275 project. And I was just wondering, I had asked about the coordination between the I-275 project and the Ford Road Boulevard project. And they were, you know, they reassured that they will be in communication. But I was just wanting to get from you what your view is about how that communication's going. And I know, you know, it, the projects are in the future still, but just, you know, to me, it's concerning that we may have these two projects going on around the same time, so.
Yeah, the the meeting up in Plymouth had a number of interesting issues that were brought up. And the state is, is, they gave a very good presentation. The idea is that that the idea that Ford Road would actually happen when this is going on is, they will never, they probably would never say, you know, that's an impossibility, but they would never allow these to happen at the same time. It would, it would be an enormous, enormous detour issue, really, to accomplish. And, and, you know, knowing where we are with the design process and ultimately the right-of-way acquisition process, they have at least another year to really get into the right-of-way acquisition. The design is progressing well. But my hope is that, as presented in Plymouth, Dan's can actually accelerate the 275 project. Like they said, that was interesting that they actually discussed that in public. But if they have a decision on that and 275 gets done in truly gets done early, we should, we should press for starting our project in 24. But they won't be, they they will never really say that out front. And that's fair. You know, they, they keep their own schedules.
Okay.
We do have a really good working relationship with them, just to add. So we're, as a kind of communication in regards to both projects and especially the Ford Road project. So see any potential conflicts, we definitely would would try and detour that and then also bring the Board in and make sure that you guys are informed of what the process, what's happening.
And I have to say, their staff, I've worked with them a long time, and Guretti has a good staff down there. This is an enormously difficult 275. It is, it is clearly the largest project that they've ever had in the state at 280 million. And so we, we talk to them all the time. And they tell us upfront when when issues arise. So that's one thing with MDOT. They're very rigid and they do keep you informed. And their website, I think, for this project should be a good resource since three years.
Okay, thank you.
Stephen?
Yeah, thanks, guys. Really good presentation. Just a tech, a technical question. What, what does it mean when it's like Pacer 5, comma, 4, comma, 3? Is that different sections on that road?
Yes, we we put those on there and it does go generally for major road intersections. So as you look on one of those portions of road, it'll, it may have two or three segments, they call them.
Okay. All right. And then the other thing that I had a question on was, oh, next year. It seemed like the dollars were more than we usually spend on surface roads. Can you?
Yeah, that, yep, I sure can. So the, the reason you're gonna see more dollars expended next year is that we're actually sitting on a fund balance within the road fund itself for a couple of different reasons. One, the first year that the millage was collected, it really, it took a little bit for the, for the projects to kick off. So so we, we're seeing a fund balance in the, in those funds. And that's gonna probably happen over the course of the next 18 years, where some years you may see a little bit less, some days, some years you may see a bit more. Depends on the complexity of the project. For instance, la, next year, with the assumption that Canton Center from Ford to Warren would be done, that's a pretty big undertaking with a pretty big price tag. That's what's throwing it over. And then you may see, you know, in subsequent years where there may be a little bit less that's actually gonna be spent. So moving toward, kinda like our water fund, it's, you can almost, like an enterprise fund where it has its own fund balance to move through the course of the next 18 years or 17 years, I guess, at this point.
Okay. Um, that makes sense. And I was glad to see it. I just wasn't sure how the money was working on that.
And in the back of the, sorry to cut you off, but in the back of the big pack, there are some financial projections that Wendy and her staff put together that do show a beginning of year fund balance and an end of year fund balance. So you can kinda see where we're, where we're headed and what are where we're trending each year from a planning perspective.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, cool. I see the historical stuff. And then, yeah. Um, it would be cool to see, I I love your maps, guys. And it would be cool to see, like, starting in 2019 when we first did it, some kind of progression as red starts turning to green. You know, I don't know how you would automate that. Michael, you could probably do that or something, but.
Are you talking on the maps?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I like.
I was talking to Dave Maurice about that, on, you know, like having that on the website and having layers you can pull in and out.
Yeah, layers, like. Yeah.
Yeah, so the interactive map, which we're always progressing and making changes to, if you do go to that.
Okay, it does that on the website?
Yeah, you can pull up the different layers by year and see what's done in totality, or you can break it down by year and by major roads and by the subdivision roads as well.
Perfect.
Yeah. And if you look at that and you see any suggestions or recommendations, let me know, because we're, we're tweaking that map all the time. As as it changes, we wanna make it as user-friendly as possible.
I haven't looked at it probably since last year, so I'll go look at it.
Oh, yeah, a lot of changes since then.
Okay, so, so two more things. One is, I'm Okay, so, so two more things. One is, I'm, and this is not disappointment in you. But just the disappointment in the fact that now we're saying 2024 for Ford Road and I understand the reasons. But, you know, we've always kind of said kicking things off sometime 2022 and in the meetings with MDOT and the state. And so that's a bit of a disappointment, but mainly that they didn't know that these things were happening at the same time. That seems weird.
No, well, the, the 275, really, the governor had put in an extra 120 million for bridges. Uh, back, they were going to do the 275, but it was only going to be like a year and a half. She, she put on all the extras, so it's just ballooned into this enormous project. So I, I, I do, you know, MDOT is, is dealing with that issue.
Okay, and then um I, the, the thing I'd say is, yeah, I li- I like the projects that you've put forward. I really, the only one mainly on a little personal note is I think my Beck Road out here between north of Ford. Is worse than we say it is here. So. I don't know if that's changed since the Pazer has gone on or.
No, but the county is going to do that next year.
Oh, great. Okay, so that's why it's, uh, perfect answer. So, yeah.
That's not me, that's.
Alright, very good, because yeah, I, I, I get complaints all the time, so. Alright, thank you. Everything, I, I'm, I'm fine with the projects.
Tanya?
Yeah, so I, I don't see the 15% that you are assigning to the Ford Road on, on any years like 2024 or anything. So is that? Is that budgeted differently or just?
Yeah, so this is just to show our projects. These are just, these are just the major road projects that we are. Um, coming to you with, because those are the ones that we make the decisions on, that you need to approve it of board. The residential portion, those are all dictated by the applications that come in from the particular homeowners associations. And then obviously we bring those back before you for approval as well. Um, but the, the 15% from, that goes to the state, that's an automatic. Uh, we have an agreement with the state and we, we get invoiced every year and we send that, I don't know which month it's in. But we do send them close to a million dollars every year and that they are sitting on um, waiting for that project to start.
Okay, and so I see the first year at the Canton Center, is that the total tier up that's happening? Because we hear a lot of people complaining that we are just putting minor fixes in there.
Yeah, as Bill presented or discussed, um, Canton Center northbound would be a total reconstruct. Strike to the northbound lanes and partial reconstruction and repairs on the southbound lanes. So, um, yes, we, the concerns you have with that section, which is ASR, um, care of those, of those concerns.
Okay, that's great to know. And I am really glad that you put in all the major intersections in there that we were looking into. Especially, I think Stephen and I pushed for Beck and Ford kind of left turn lane there. I'm glad that's one of the things in the intersection projects that you are thinking about. And I, I really like the idea of rotary for the Salts, Denton Ridge. One of the most difficult intersections that we have. So, yeah, I, I, I really, the presentation was very helpful. Thank you so much.
Summer?
Um, just want to say thank you very much. I know a lot of hard work went into putting this five-year plan together. And I know that a lot of times the county doesn't make it easy because they don't always televise what's coming up next um from their end. So thank you very much for all of the work that you put into this. I think it's great. The residents are going to be able to see what's coming up next, because I think every year when we announce a new slate of road projects, we always hear, what about this road? What about this road? When is it coming? Um, and so I think it's good that they would be able to see that, see the justification um that you put into the document along with the cost. Because I don't think a lot of people know how much these road projects or these reconstructs um end up costing. Or, or even exactly how much money we're getting from um the road millage every year. I think it would be great if there was a way, and I know a lot of people will pull up the document on their computer to put live links. To the interactive roadmap in there and to do live links to um the Pacer map. Um, I know that we're doing another Pacer study um next year, so I think it would be great to um add that to the document. And then I'm very happy that we're looking at doing um Canton Center um next year. I think it's a road that definitely needs to be done, um, no matter who's going to pay for it. But my um hope would be that the county would kick in some money um to contribute to that project. So let's keep pushing them on that. But again, thank you.
Yeah, it was, uh, I don't know, Emery, if, I don't want to steal your thunder, I don't know if you want to talk about Commissioner Dobbs after she saw the document.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
So, uh, Commissioner Dobbs couldn't make it tonight, but she did see the document and right away noticed Canton Center. And asked all the details. Um, and then I think there'll be a meeting forthcoming with her in the executive's office to talk about some county funding. To help with that, uh, with that project. That just happened today, so.
That was the email from earlier.
Yes, so, so, so I think, you know, that, that right there makes this document um worth its weight in gold to me, but.
We really couldn't wait any longer, you know. That's okay.
Agreed. No, thank you. Michael?
Everybody had a lot of awesome things to provide and, you know, working with Summer on the um kind of internal group. I could just see a lot of this, so I don't have a whole lot. Um, I don't have any questions, because I've already had an opportunity to ask questions about. You know, the five-year plan. Um, I like it, I really do. I think, I just like strategic planning in general. It, 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 it helps create that um accountability and to put a system in place for how you, you make decisions. You know, a lot of times when we leave decisions up to, up to whim or crowdsource them, we don't make strategic decisions, which is we don't spend money well. And from the beginning, we kind of always knew. Um, we had a $250 million problem with $110 million of money. And if you're going to successfully use that $110 million, you have to be very strategic about it. And the other part of it is um, everybody thinks the road in front of their house is the worst road in Canton Township. What's interesting and what I think is amazing about this is, is, is it, it is the most ambitious local roads program that I have seen. It's definitely the most collaborative local roads program that I have seen laid out in Michigan at least. Um, most townships solely focus on neighborhood streets with their roads villages and um. A lot of townships are in rural counties where it's extremely cheap to fix the roads. You know, you're just asphalt, really, so it's, they have fantastic roads up there. Um, they don't get the truck traffic we do. But um, so this, where we are working with HOAs, where we are doing. Infrastructure repair to local streets without a match, where we are working with the county. Uh, to join into county projects, where we are doing our own projects on major streets, where we are working with MDOT. On uh Ford Road. It's just pretty impressive to see it all laid out. So my hat is off to Municipal Services Division and Engineering um as well for, for being able to do this. And the work, I have, I have, I see the, the work, um, you know. Play every single day, and so I'm really grateful. I'm really grateful for it. I think um. It's painful when you see this much construction going on, but um, you know, the anger I have at detours. And orange construction barrels is far less significant than the anger I have at potholes. So I like the idea that we're aggressively going after this stuff. Um, my only question would be like, so with the current Lily Road repairs, when, when all is said and done, is that going to be? Uh, concrete slab cut out like you see over at Canton Center, or is that going to be a base level concrete repair with an asphalt overlay? I saw some pavers out there, so I just didn't know what the.
No, uh, what, and this is probably a good example of, of one of these projects. Uh, it is going to be concrete base repairs, uh, and then we're going to do asphalt overlay at the end. So it'll have a new crown asphalt. And just to give you an example of how these projects usually go, that, that project, since we had assessed it. Last summer, actually, and last fall, it, it, it required a little more base repair. So that project has a little more base repair, whereas the Canton Center project that was completed a month or so ago. Actually came in a little bit under, just to give the board a flavor for how these projects tend to go. Um, so Lil- Lily will be, the asphalt will crown and it'll, it'll be similar, or I'm sorry, Sheldon. Will be similar to what Lily, uh, what Lily was done two years ago, I think. Yeah.
Yeah.
Be similar to that.
It just, yeah, just to give a little context to that too, with what Bill just said, I think it's important to bring the RBAs before you for approval. That's why we always add in contingency, because we may design a project today and, you know, it may be done next spring. In between now and next spring, conditions can change and we just want to make sure they're prepared, so we don't have to come back before the board for amended budgets. Um, in the middle of a project that we can just continue to move through the project smoothly.
Oh, that's great to hear. And I would just put out now, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels about this. But if at any point in time, there's a project where it, scope of the work extends outside of the contingency. Put into the position of, do we, do we, do we cut down on the repair work done? Or do we go over budget? I would love for you to come to the board and get our temperature on it, because I'm more. Definitely more interested in making sure that the repair work is done right than, than, than it'd be done, than it'd be done cheaply. And I know that's the level of expectation we get out of your department, Jade, so.
Yep, nope, and I think um we did that last year and, and Bill, you'll have to, I can't remember the particular road. But when we got to the end of the project, we said, okay, it doesn't make sense to stop here. So we worked with the country and we continued to move forward. Because it, we just would have been back there in a few more years. So, I mean, in the long run, we actually save money, even though we're spending more now.
Yeah, I, I hate to, I hate to do that. You don't want to cheapen that up. And it does happen on some road projects, not ours. But uh, it, it does happen. I mean, it happens on other projects. And that's the thing, you know what? If you do these types of projects like Sheldon or Lily, it will reflect, it reflects through the asphalt. So that essentially getting that base down there to be a good solid base, that's the key. Asphalt is actually cheaper than the concrete work.
Yeah, no, right. Well, and I think it's easier from what I've seen so far to repair a road than it is to repair public confidence. And um, so I think it's really important that when we do, like especially Canton Center, right? That we make sure the fix we implement is the fix of, that will, that will, that will extend that life. And, and, and we'll have a couple of good years without noticeable air and tear on it. Because again, uh, there are people rooting for, I mean, ultimately they aren't rooting for a failure. They want to drive on good roads. But they are suspicious of our good intentions and they're waiting, they're waiting to be proven wrong. Um, especially with Canton Center, that's the boogeyman, you know, that's the, that's the one. That's the, the single road that, you know, sends people over, over the limits. So anyway, that's, that are my two cents.
For anybody else? No, thanks for the presentation and some of the um items that you talked about are in this book in terms of the old. Intersections, if anyone wants to read about them, you can read about it in this Canton Horace historical document.
I would say, uh, you, you know, with, when we finalize this report, we're going to add in some disclaimers and, and. I'll work with Jade and I'd like to actually get the first two years worth of projects under design. And, and one thing I will comment before I, I stop going on is if we could get all four, I think there's four or five projects in the next two years. We can interchange, but we have to move them around. There is no such thing as a design on the shelf, but we can move them from one year to the next. Uh, we know the various constraints, so that would kind of be a goal moving forwards, kind of move forward in two-year chunks. And the intersections of, we'll see how far we can get with those with the other agencies we have to work with. Those are, those could be huge. So.
Yeah, so I think in the next couple of our um, or to board meetings, we'll be bringing RBA forward to move forward with those designs. Based upon this, this plan.
And as Jane and Bill alluded to, it doesn't mean, you know, in terms of like some of the projects that some of our congresspeople and senators ask us for. I mean, by having this road plan in place, you can create these projects to hand to them quickly to see if we can get funding, you know, to pull things up also. Which helps.
Will the presentation and plan be on the website? I think you said it would, but I don't see it there yet, right?
Yeah, it's not there. We're waiting for feedback to make sure that, and then we need to check some typos and numbers, but it's all, it's pretty much wrapped up. So it'll be out there.
I just made my way down to the appendix and I like seeing the actual percentages spent in each category. That, that was good, so we can say, yeah, we're doing what we said.
Yeah, that was, uh, Finance put those together for us, so thank you to Wendy and Sarah for that.
Wendy.
It would be, it would be ultimately nice if the county were able to do a five-year plan as well, because a lot of the times when we have. By the decisions we're making, people will say, what are you doing? You know, a good example was the back road incident, right? Well, the county is going to be tackling that issue. So there are times when we purposely don't tackle projects, because we know they're going to, potentially going to be on the. The county's radar. And again, we're trying to, you know, fix the roads, but be good stewards of money of, of public resources too. And so it's like, it would be super awesome if we had both plans that we could kind of. Put out there at the same time and say, well, here's this, here's the township's five-year plan, here's the county's five-year plan. I know that we're not there yet. But it would be extremely helpful.
Yes.
You know, and people have no idea about the scope of work. They're like, you know, you should do this. It's like, oh, if I had them, you know, okay. If I win the lottery, we'll, I'll go to the township and we'll fix that, you know, we'll do that $10 million project. But uh, we don't have enough money.
No, Jade had actually mentioned that today.
Right, like the number one thing I hear is, why didn't you go, why didn't you do the other mile? It's like, do you have any idea how much it costs to do another mile? Like, of course we can't do that, we don't have the money.
Any more questions? Oh, thank you. No, thanks. That's true, for the last 100 feet, yep. Okay, um, thank you. And does the board want to vote to accept this or? I mean, are there any other questions or will we?
I mean, I will vote to accept the five-year plan if any.
Do I ever hear a support for that?
I was gonna ask if that was a motion.
Alright, let's have a vote to support this five-year roads plan. Clark Seagrest, please take roll call on the motion.
Alright, Seagrest, uh, Snyderman?
Hi.
Borninsky?
Hi.
Foster?
Hi.
Kanguli?
Hi.
Graham Hudek?
Hi. Great, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is a consent calendar. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Ma'am Supervisor, I move that the board approved the, the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider awarding contract and approve. Purchase order for project in connection with the capital improvement program. And item C2, consider resolution affirming approval of the Senior Alliance 2022 annual implementation plan for aging services.
Support.
Thank you, Clark Seagrest, please take a roll call, any, on the motion, I'm sorry. I'm thinking we're in the general calendar or not.
Um, yeah, Snyderman?
Hi.
Borninsky?
Hi.
Foster?
Hi.
Kanguli?
Hi.
Graham Hudek?
Hi.
Seagrest, hi.
Thank you, motion passes. Now we can move to the general calendar. Um, can I have a motion for G1? Consider first reading of an amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances regarding Anderson rezoning.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of the proposed amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances. The Charter Township of Canton is provided in the attached ordinance, which rezones a 38.8 acre. Portion of parcel number listed from RR Rural Residential to RR1 Single Family Residential. Which is described in the enclosed proposed parcel survey dated April to 2021. As an area measuring 330 feet by 495 feet in the southeast corner of the subject parcel. And to, and um, to hold a second reading on August 10, 2021.
Right.
Thank you. The applicants proposed to rezonate a portion of their parcel at 49650 Warren Road. Located on the north side of Warren Road, west of Bridge Road from RR Rural Residential to RR1 Single Family Residential. Specifically, the applicants proposed to rezonate a portion of the southeast corner of their parcel, which measures, measures 330 feet by 490 feet. Which is 3.8 acres. It is described in the proposed parcel survey dated April 2nd, 2021. The applicants proposed to retain the RR zoning on the west and north pars- portions of the parcel, which includes their home and accessory structures. Um, Jade, do you want to add anything?
No, I have nothing more to add to this.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Steven?
Patrick, what's happening here? I, um, it's, it's a little confusing. I, um, it's, it's a little confusing.
Sure. The applicants are proposing to rezone the southeast part of their property to R1. Typically, when we see rezoning applications, we see where somebody wants to rezone an entire piece of property. Um, whether they want to have a bunch of splits or sell it to a developer. Um, in this case, uh, we have a situation where the current owners want to retain um, their current house, but they have some vacant property on the east side of their lot that they would like to split and to sell off for individual lots. Uh, to do that, uh, they would have to rezone because currently the, the current RR zoning is five acre minimum lot size. And the master plan supports the R1 district, which is a one acre minimum lot size. And so they've gone through a number of different configurations for potential land divisions and the configuration that they've proposed. Um, we've kind of settled on in terms of some lots that would meet both the size requirements and the dimensional requirements of the ordinance. Should it be rezoned to R1? So that's why this, um, specific area was measured and chosen this way is that if it is rezoned to R1 in that southeast corner, as it's measured, they, they would get, uh, two splits based on, um, what we've been able to determine so far.
And just to the east of that is the new sub that's going in there. Is that, if I remember correctly, is that right?
Uh, correct. That's Arbor Glen.
Okay. So it's, it's not like just to the east of them is, um, what's that zoned for Arbor Glen R1 also?
Uh, yes, Arbor Glen is zoned R1.
Okay. It didn't say it on the map. So, um, gotcha. I understand now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Clark Seagrest, please take a roll call on the motion.
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Kanguli.
Hi.
Ram Hudek.
Hi.
Seagrest, hi. Snyderman.
Hi.
Motion passes. Item G2, consider approval of site plan and condominium ordinance variances for Cherry Hill Preserve.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve or adopt the following resolution. The approval of the site plan in condominium ordinance variances for Cherry Hill Preserve. Whereas project sponsor has requested site plan approval for 12 two-unit attached residential buildings on the north side of Cherry Hill Road.
Bless you.
Thank you. Between lots road and the eastern township boundary as well as variance approval from the condominium ordinance to permit the non-boulevard cul-de-sac road to Cherry Hill Preserve to access the proposed 24 units. And whereas the planning commission reviewed the site plan for Cherry Hill Preserve and voted nine zero to recommend approval of the site plan with conditions and voted eight to zero to recommend approval of variances from condominium ordinance as the site plan is consistent with the cert approved special land use plan and meets the design requirements of the zoning ordinance and condominium ordinance, except where variances are approved by the zoning board of appeals and township board as applicable. Now therefore be it resolved, the board of trustees, the charter township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the site plan for Cherry Hill Preserve on the subject parcels as proposed in the plan documents and does hereby approve variances from section 82 dash 124, section four in section 82 dash 124, section six of the condominium ordinance to permit the non-boulevard cul-de-sac subject to the conditions recommended by the planning commission and all applicable state, county and township requirements.
Or.
Thank you. The project sponsor proposes to construct 12 two-unit attached residential buildings on the three subject contiguous parcels, which are currently vacant. The site is zoned R4 Single Family Residential, which allows two-unit attached residences via special land use. The allowable density of two-unit attached single-family buildings in the current R4 district is up to 5.18 units per acre. And the applicant proposes a density of 3.12 units per acre. According to the applicant, the proposed two-unit attached single-family residential buildings will be owner occupied condominiums. Site plan is based on the approved special land use plan, which the township board of trustees approved on January 12th, 2021. Planning commission recommended approval of the site plan at its June 7th, 2021 meeting. You recommended approval of variances from the condominium ordinance at its July 12th, 2021 meeting to permit the non-boulevard cul-de-sac road of Cherry Hill Preserve to access 24 residential units. Uh, Jade or Patrick, do you want to add anything?
I don't have anything additional to add unless there's some questions. I have nothing else to add.
Right. Any questions? Tanya?
Yeah. Uh, so I was looking at the plan and, um, Patrick, so the blue area there, is that a wetland or is, are they planning to, you know, keep something there or are they planning to build a water feature there? I was not sure what they were doing there.
Um, yeah, let me pull that up here. Okay. So the, um, the blue area there will be their proposed stormwater pond.
You quit sharing there. Oh, did you? I'm sorry. Were you trying to show something?
Yeah, I was just going to show the, the plan, but it wasn't.
It wasn't going up. Okay.
Right. Do you, what do you see right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, we see it. It's not maximized, but we see it.
Okay.
Come on this right here.
Yeah. So that's theirs. They're, they are going to build a stormwater pond there.
Yeah, they'll be required, um, to meet county stormwater requirements.
Okay.
And so, um, in most cases, there's a, there'll be a, there's a pond on property. So in this case, they, they have that pond there in that corner.
And what we are approving today for the site plan is, is, uh, is a regular road and not a boulevard, right? That's what we're trying to do here. Is that right?
Uh, correct. It, uh, it'll be a non-boulevard cul-de-sac. And, uh, it's less than, um, a thousand feet long, which is typically the threshold at which engineering and fire would want a second access. So it, it, it's not, it's not even close to a thousand feet long. And we've had both engineering and fire look at it and, um, they, they don't believe a cul-de-sac is necessary. Um, and then this, um, this cul-de-sac, it aligns to a road directly south across Cherry Hill Road. I think it's Buckingham Road or Buckingham Street. So, and which is a non, um, boulevard road. So that would, that would be a little bit better alignment of aligning two non-boulevard roads with each other.
Okay, thank you.
Patrick.
Oh, was it Patrick? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Michael. Go ahead.
You were, you were, I was just wanting to follow up. It looks like there's another detention area or just north of that. So is there, are they going to have a detention pond and a retention area that's going to be dry is like adjacent to it? Is that what's going on with their stormwater management there?
With the, uh, two ponds there, um, usually one of them, the smaller of the two is usually a for bay where, um, that's where the water will go first. And, uh, sometimes, uh, the for bay, um, sometimes it'll carry, uh, silt and, and sediments. And, um, so it'll go from the, uh, eventually go from the for bay, looking at the screen here to the right to the pond area itself where it comes out a little bit cleaner, where it doesn't have any kind of silt or sediment. And so over time, the for bay, um, it starts to, it starts to fill up and every once in a while associations and pond owners have to clean out their for bay, sometimes reseeded as it, as it gets, uh, uh, filled up, but it's just a way of, of processing the water before it goes to the pond itself, to that blue area to the right.
I'm curious, as we continue to have these, um, 1% or one in a hundred percent floods and 0.2% floods that have been going on in the last decade or so. I'm, I'm curious if the state of Michigan or the Wayne County will up, update their, um, stormwater discharge requirements under, um, you know, I know there's current standards uh, still allow for, for outflow from these ponds into, into the county drain system. Um, depending on how many units are there. Um, as we continue to push our stormwater down into Inkster and Dearborn and Dearborn Heights, I'll be curious to see if at some point the feds or the states are going to step in and, and start requiring, um, no water to be displaced off of a property and what that looks like. But I have some concerns about the flooding that's been going on and it also bothers me that up until the mid nineties, we didn't really require any type of retention or detention at all. It just, you just pushed it off your property into the storm, into the creek. And up to that point, you know, the idea was just get it, get it, get it, get it through the creek as fast as possible. You know, even the improvements that I think are happening to the drain are about improving the flow of the drain, which is really just going to help push more water downstream into the communities that are, you know, having water in their basement. So be interesting.
Yeah. And on that point, um, as a, as a non-engineer planner, so I don't, I don't have any of the.
Sorry.
No, that's, that's fine. But as a planner and I, I've been working, um, for a number of years, um, in, in the last several years and in many communities uh, in Wayne County especially, and, um, the county and many other counties in Michigan, um, over the past several years, they have been accounting for the future impacts of, of climate change and as storms become more frequent and, um, heavier rainfalls and, and trying to accommodate that. And over the last several years, I've, I've only seen the stormwater standards, um, become even higher. And, um, I know that, that it's a major issue. Um, obviously with, uh, with storms and with, with flooding and high rain events and a lot of these ponds, especially more recently, they're designed to, to hold very large volumes of water. Um, I can't speak to exactly how much in the volumes, but that is something to, uh, that they strive for to get those heavy rain events to hold that water, uh, because, um, it's, it's there to process the water and, and to function as a regular pond. But it's also sized and graded so that when there are large rain events, that it's going to have that volume to hold the water so that it can take its time to seep back into the soil itself. Um, and I think a lot of the goals are to get it to infiltrate into the ground rather than outletting, um, elsewhere. In many cases, there, there are outlets and there's a lot of different ways to do it, but I think one of the major objectives is to try to get it back in the ground so that we're minimizing the water that is being sent elsewhere.
Thank you. Steven?
Yeah, thanks. Um, Patrick, can you go to the satellite picture? I think that's what I would call it with the yellow outline.
Uh, let me get that over there.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Jade, I thought it.
That's okay.
It was one slide up from the, um.
Yeah, but he wasn't from the.
I wasn't, I, I tried to, I tried to pre-plan what you guys are going to look at and then I put those in a different document.
Yeah.
So, I bet.
There you go. That's it. No, the one below it, the satellite one. Yep, there you go. So what's, what's going on to the west there? Is that another sub we approved or something?
Um, that one, I'm not, um, I'm not really sure what, what that use is. Um, I know it's not, I don't think it has any kind of a site plan approval.
Okay.
There, I think it's.
Looks like some structures or something there to me. It looks like houses, but maybe not.
There has been historically, uh, some type of, uh, uh, reclamation activity there. There have been some permits, I think ordinance may be aware of, uh, related to dump not, uh, just logging and other, other activities. It goes back for many, many years. It's some type of grandfathered use, but it is, it is controversial.
Uh, okay. Concerned about having that next door, but you know, it's, it looks like the woods kind of protect the new sub from it. What is that drain or what to the north that angles off there? Is that rouge or?
Um, that's the ATC corridor.
ATC, yeah.
Uh, okay. ITC corridor. Maybe someday we can have trails on there. That would be, that would be good. Um, okay. Um, the last question is, and Jade, I don't know how quickly you can find it, but there was a lot of talk in the planning commission minutes, Patrick, about dormers and the facade, I think. Was that this one?
Yeah, there, um, there was discussion about, um, about the, uh, the appearance of, of the buildings and, um, what the planning commission had recommended is that, um, over the, uh, front porches, that there be dormers there. And, um, it's not in the, it's not in the packet, but the, um, the applicant has since submitted some architectural drawings that do show, um, a little bit of a pitch over the front porches. Um, so if you're looking at the front elevations of the, uh, of the buildings there, instead of having a flat roof line.
Okay.
Porches, there's just a little pitch added to break up that, that long roof line.
Yeah. Jade, I think they're in here somewhere, but I, that's what my question was. I wasn't sure if this was with the addition or whether this was before the addition, um, if you go down into the.
Yeah, I, I think, um, yeah. My frozen. Yeah, they're in here. It's sideways, um, packet. But I think this, as Patrick just said, this is the old, um, rendering. Is that right, Patrick?
Or is that the new?
Um, I believe the, I believe those are, um, let me just double check here.
Now they, now they look good.
Yeah, dormers here, something to break up this roof line, I believe.
Over the porch.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are the, those are the older ones. Um, we, we have the revised ones, um, sent to us just after the, the deadline.
Okay.
The, um, uh, just after the deadline of getting our RBA in there, but I do have them up on my, up on my screen. Um, I can, I can put them up.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I just, I wasn't sure. So it, that, it's, it would be good. They are nice but a little plain. So it'd be nice to see.
Okay. Um, I have up here, I don't know if you can see it, but, um, there's a little bit of a pitch over the front porch, just to break up that front roof line.
Gotcha. Yep. Very good. Thank you.
Summer, did you have anything to add? Is the representative?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. So, Kate?
Thanks. Um, Jade, could you go back to that, um, color plan map?
Yeah.
So looking at that, if I read it correctly, um, the darker green circles are trees that are going to be replaced or put in by the developer and then the lighter green bushy areas are trees that are remaining.
Um, yeah, the, uh, the color plan tends to be, um, a little bit more, um, illustrative. So I think it, it illustrates, um, sometimes with the trees, it's not the equivalent of a landscape plan. So they may put in more trees just to illustrate more. Um, but I think that, um, some of the.
I just, I want to talk about the, the lighter green areas, um, because if, when I was looking at the other maps and the site plan, um, it looked like that's where the wetlands are that, um.
Yeah, there, there are a lot of wetlands on the site, um, and a lot of wetlands that are being preserved. So those lighter areas that you referred to, most of those areas are wetlands where there won't be any grading and, um, uh, no tree removal. If there's any tree removal, it'd be very, very little.
Okay.
So there's going to be about three quarters of the trees will be preserved.
Right, which I, I think is great. Um, just looking at the, uh, the number of areas that look like they're wetlands on the map, um, I guess I do wonder about, you know, like drainage. About, you know, like drainage and um, flooding again, but to Michael's point. And um, just, I don't, I mean, is it what they have planned for those ponds, is that gonna be enough or?
Um, one of the requirements that they'll have to do is first with um, with the Michigan Department of Eagle, any um. Any, any activity that requires a wetland permit would have to receive Eagle approval and they've been, they've been too eagle for uh, the permit review. And um, and the mod, the layout that's proposed is largely based on Eagle's recommendations of minimizing wetland impacts. In terms of uh, the drainage and the flooding, um. After someone completes site plan review, then they go to the engineering review. But the engineering division has reviewed the plans mostly for a preliminary engineering review and feasibility. Um, and so a lot of those issues get worked out through our development review committee process before it goes to the planning commission. But after the site plan review process, there's a much more detailed engineering review and they go through. Both uh, the township engineering division and Wayne County. Uh, Wayne County largely has jurisdiction over stormwater standards. So they would have to design and size their pond according to Wayne County standards. And Wayne County's engineers would be looking at this as well before they issue any kind of permit.
Okay, so the, the, the size of the ponds could change then based on that, is that right?
Correct. Um, and oftentimes that does happen where a plan will go through engineering review and uh, the county engineers may require. You know, a, a different sized pond or something with the pond that slightly alters a plan. Um, so this will be reviewed um, again and in more detail by Wayne County Stormwater Engineers.
Okay. Um, yeah, and I'd also noticed that um, already approved were the um, the wetland setbacks. That were um, a little bit closer than what is normally done.
Uh, correct. A few months ago, the zoning board of appeals had um, had recommended uh, variances for wetland encroachments. Um, and that was largely based on Eagle's recommendation for layouts that minimized wetland impacts. So the proposal to the zoning board of appeals was that there was a layout that Eagle. Um, had recommended that would minimize impacts and by minimizing impacts, as a result, there would be some setback encroachments, so. Um, to minimize any kind of impact or additional wetland filling. Uh, variances were granted to allow the setback encroachments, which as a result, had managed to save more wetland areas.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Um, okay, there we go. Any more hands? Okay, great. Clerk Segras, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segristi, Snyderman.
Hi.
Borninsky.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item G three. Okay, where's my cursor? G three. Can I have a motion for consider Havens Orthodox Plan Development District Amendment Number One?
And supervisor, I move that the board adopt following resolution. Approval of Plan Development District Amendment Number One for Havens Orthodox. Whereas project sponsor has requested approval of amendment number one of the Plan Development District for Havens Orthodox. Located at the southeast corner of Joy Road and Canton Center Road. And whereas brought the planning commission reviewed the amended plan development plan. And plan development agreement and voted eight to zero. Recommend approval of the request as it is consistent with the plan development of Havens Orthodox and meets the design requirements of the zoning ordinance. Where modifications are approved. Now therefore be it resolved. The Board of Trustees, the township of Canton, Michigan is hereby approve amendment number one for Havens Orthodox Plan Development. On tax parcels listed. Has provided the plan development agreement and plan documents to allow two multi-tenant grounds, uh, signs providing. Provided the signs are located at least two hundred feet. From the right of way intersection of Canton Center Road and Joy Road apply with the legibility requirements of section six A. Two five of the zoning ordinance and that each sign must not exceed forty-two square feet in area, eight feet in height or ten feet in width.
Support.
Thank you. On November twenty-four, twenty-twenty, the Township Board of Trustees approved a plan. Development for the subject two point two acre site at the southeast corner of Joy Road and Canton Center Road. Eight seven seven two and eight seven five eight Canton Center Road. The approved PD plan consists of a mixed-use building of office and commercial uses. Site plan for Havens Orthodox was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission on April fifth, twenty-twenty-one, approved by the Township Board in April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one. The applicant proposes to amend the PD to allow for two multi-tenant ground signs on the site, one at each entrance. Subject site is a corral lot and each ground sign is proposed to be more than two hundred feet from the intersection of Canton Center Road and Joy Road. Zoning district permits only one ground site per development site. Jade, do you have anything to add?
Um, no, I think we've, we've talked about the site uh, quite a few times and so this is coming back in regards to just the signage.
Okay, Summer, anything?
Sorry, took me a minute, taken off mute. Um, no, this was pretty easy going through the planning commission, there were no. Um, questions or concerns, this, it had previously come through um, for a site plan approval and um. For the plan development, so we were pretty familiar with the project, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, any questions from anyone? Okay, Clerk Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segristi, Snyderman.
Hi.
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Motion passes. Item G five, consider approval of the Meadows of Cherry Hill final site plan.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move that the board prove or adopt the following resolution. Approval of special land use for a group childcare home, Camilla Bagley Day Care. Where a project sponsor, Camilla Bagley has, or Badgley, has requested special land use approval for a group. Childcare home at four nine zero nine zero. Fifth Avenue located in the Central Park subdivision, south subdivision number one, and whereas planning commission. Reviewed the request and applicable criteria and voted eight to zero to recommend approval of special land use. Subject to the condition that the owner maintains all state licensing for the group childcare home, now therefore be it resolved. The Board of Trustees of the Charter of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the special land use request for a group daycare home. For Camilla, Camilla Badgley at four nine zero nine zero Fifth Avenue on the tax, subject to tax parcel listed, subject to the. Condition that the owner maintains all state licensing for the group childcare home.
Support.
Thank you. The applicant proposes to conduct a group childcare home and a personal residence at four nine zero nine zero Fifth Avenue. Ms. Bagley presents, presently has a license for a family childcare home which allows for up to six children. Which is a permitted use under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Any childcare used for more than six children is a special land use. Group childcare homes licensed in the state of Michigan allow for up to twelve children. The special land use criteria for group childcare homes are established in the Michigan Zoning Enabling. Act MCL one twenty-five point three two zero six. Jade, do you have anything to add for this?
I do not.
Okay, Summer?
No, I don't have anything to add.
All right, any questions or comments? Stephen?
Um, I think Ms. Bagley is here. Um, I had a question for her. I don't know if she can.
I see. Okay, uh, Ms. Bagley, uh, Stephen, you want to ask her? She's.
Sure, are you there? Oh, it's like you're there. Hello. Um, the question I had was the state licensing, um, to go up to twelve um. Children, do you have to have um, more than one adult there at all times?
Yes, you have to have um, a one to six ratio.
Okay, I remember that from when my um, children were at, in home. Daycare a long time ago. Um, is it still a limit of the number of children under twelve months or eighteen months?
Yes, there is a um, there is an age limit to for having. Like three children under the age of eighteen months, then there's another group from eighteen to thirty-six months. So it's like a ratio within ratios of age groups.
Gotcha. Okay, that, that was really, it looks like you have a nice setting in, in your home for um, daycare, so. I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Kate?
Um, I just wanted to clarify that we are on G four. Um, and also um, wanted to thank Jade and Patrick for answering my questions about this. Um, this afternoon, late this afternoon, so sorry about my lateness and um. I, I think that, you know, it's important to have daycare facilities available for parents and. Um, I think that ones that are in uh, a neighborhood in a home are, are quite nice, so. Um, I am in favor of this.
Thank you. Anyone else? You're right, we are on G, item G four. Anyone else? Okay, Clerk Segras, please take roll call on the motion.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segristi, Snyderman.
Hi.
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G five, consider approval of the Meadows of Cherry Hill final site plan.
And supervisor. Move that the board approve the following resolution, the approval of final plan for the Meadows of Cherry Hill. Whereas project sponsor has requested approval of the final site plan for the Meadows of Cherry Hill. Property located on the west side of Ridge Road between Salts Road and the ITC corridor and. Whereas the planning commission reviewed the final site plan for the Meadows of Cherry Hill and voted eight to zero to recommend. Approval of the request as it meets the design requirements of the zoning ordinance and condominium ordinance and is consistent with the plan development agreement for the Meadows of Cherry Hill. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the final site plan for the Meadows of Cherry Hill. On the subject tax parcels as proposed in the plan documents, subject to all applicable state, county and township requirements.
With support.
All right.
Right.
Thank you. The applicant proposes to locate thirty-eight single-family residential site condominiums on the approximately fifteen point eight acres. Located on the west side of Ridge Road between Salts Road and the ITC corridor. Project density of two point four one residential units per acre is less than the maximum density of four units per acre permitted in the village edge area of the Cherry Hill Village. Overly District. One entrance is proposed on Ridge Road and a connection to West Ridge Estates of Canton to the west is proposed via an extension of Hesperus Drive. Project sponsor proposes to maintain thirty-three point nine percent of the site, five point three seven acres. Is open space, preserve trees along the existing water course, preserve existing trees around the perimeter of the site. The final site plan is based on the approved plan development, which is the Township Board of Trustees approved on August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty. As well as the approved preliminary site plan, which the Township Board of Trustees approved on November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty. Uh, Jade, do you have anything else to add to this?
Uh, no, other than we had some concerned residents that our engineering team went out and met with them in regards to the elevation. Of drainage purposes, but we worked with them and um, they were happy with the answers that were given to them.
Okay, thank you. Summer, anything to add?
They don't have anything, but I just um, was curious because the planning commission minutes weren't included. Um, in the board packet, so I just was curious about that.
Yeah, we were still in the process of uh, doing the board minutes or the planning commission minutes uh, when the request for board action. Uh, due date was coming up, so we had gotten through the first items in the, in the planning commission meeting of July twelfth, but. I think this was an item that was later on the agenda and we were doing them in order that they appeared on the, uh, the board's agenda, so those minutes had not yet been completed.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Stephen?
Um, so, thank you. Have uh, the drive on the west, like that will connect into the other neighborhood? Is that correct, Patrick?
Uh, yes, that's correct. There's a, there's a drive proposed into uh, Hesperus Drive to the west, so. There's a cross connection and the development to the west has a stub right there, so it's designed on the west side for a future connection.
Uh, what do you mean future? Like when it's complete, will it be connected there?
Um, yes, um, the development uh, to the west. Um, that's completed right now, at least that portion that's west of Meadows of Cherry Hill. Um, that already has the stub street and stub sidewalks just west of the property. So what Meadows of Cherry Hill will do is it'll carry those out and, and it'll, it'll have another connection to Ridge Road, so. Um, so people that live in the development to the west, um, they could access uh, Ridge Road through Meadows of Cherry Hill with. Either their vehicle or if they're walking or on their bike.
Gotcha. Um, for all these subs, I, I've said it before, I'm still a little disappointed that there's no sidewalk access to downtown. Um, I think I'm correct in saying that, that that sub that you just mentioned to the west also doesn't have sidewalk access. I know the corridor goes through there, ITC goes through there, right?
Um, yeah, ITC is um, is just to the south.
Yeah.
There are, there are some connection challenges because just south of the subject site, there's um. There's a drain there, so for the subject site to, to have something on the uh, the ITC or stubbing to the ITC. That uh, that could affect the drainage course there along the south side of the property.
Okay, it may maybe have to be something we address in sidewalk. Um, talking about paths and sidewalks and connections, because. I know this is still considered village and it, the fact that it doesn't have sidewalks into town. Really bothers me about it. I mean, I think it's a nicely laid out subdivision. The other thing is that I think I've mentioned a few times is I really love that sidewalk and uh, that other subdivision that goes around the retention pond. That subdivision to the west, just sort of south a, at the end of Napier there. And I wish they could have done something like that here for at least people to have a place to walk on his sidewalk around the retention ponds, because. I see a lot of use of that when I ride my bike through that other subdivision. So I still recommend it be added, but at this point, I, I think I've said my piece on it. I know that the neighbors didn't want a sidewalk coming out on that little tiny sliver. Um, but at least it'll be a grass area that I believe they'll still be allowed to walk on. I mean, it's part of their neighborhood.
Yeah, it, it is that, that strip that goes through there, so it would be accessible for, for people that live in the development.
Okay. All right, those are just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Clerk Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
I'm my way back to the meeting. I was looking at satellite uh. Images of the uh, of the subject area. Segrist, I, Snyderman.
Hi.
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Sorry, I got muted. I.
Graham Hudek.
Hi. Motion passes. Item G six, consider two contracts, one to Brick, Bitigear Contractors Incorporated and the other to Fishback. For the twenty-twenty-one Waterman Capital Improvement Project and improve a budget amendment.
And supervisor, I move to approve the award, the following budget amendment and further. Award contracts as presented in the amount totaling seventeen, one point seven million dollars to Bridgetir Contractors Incorporated. And sixty thousand four hundred and twenty dollars to Fishback for the twenty-twenty-one Waterman. and $60,420 to Fishback for the 2021 Water Main Capital Improvement Projects and further authorize the township supervisor or clerk to sign the contracts on behalf of the charter township.
Any more support?
All right.
Thank you. The 2018 Water Master Plan identified a number of projects necessary to meet the existing and future water demands of our customers. In addition to the master plan, staff is constantly evaluating locations that are experiencing multiple main breaks in a relatively small area. As part of the annual water rate setting process, the determination was made to increase the capital expenditures to complete this work. The increase being presented was taken into consideration when the board of trustees approved the current water rates on May 4th, 2021 resulted in an overall rate decrease. Staff is recommending award a contract to Bid a Gear Contractors Incorporated for 2021 Water Main Capital Improvement Project for an amount not to exceed 1,700,000, which includes a 15% contingency. This award a contract is a continuation of contract for water main replacement of existing underperforming unreliable water main. Staff is also recommending continuation of contract for construction management and inspection services to Fishback for an amount not to exceed $60,420. Fishback served in the same position for the 2019 and 2020 Water Main CIP. Jade, do you want to add anything?
Uh, no, th- this is, uh, pretty much a requirement that we maintain our utilities and, um, as part of the board's strategies, the quality infrastructure. Um, the $2 million was accounted for in the budgeting process when you guys, we discussed the water rates and set those rates. So that budget amendment has already been, uh, dollars has already been discussed and taken into account when we set those rates. So it's not going to change the water rates, um, at, at this time. And there was a question that was posed, um, in regards to the dollar amount that's being awarded versus the budget amendment. I just let you know that there is extra dollars in there. And if we do find other infrastructure improvements that we can do this year, or we run into an emergency situation, we do have dollars, um, for more, uh, utility repairs.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, Clerk Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Borninsky.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segras.
Hi.
Great, thank you. Motion passes. Item G seven. Consider approval of the purchase of a CAT 313 GC excavator.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award a purchase order contract to Michigan's CAT for an amount not to exceed 142,626.53 with purchase of a new 2021 CAT 313 GC excavator.
Support.
Thank you. Our public works staff operates and maintains the township's 460 miles of water main, 360 miles of sanitary sewer, multiple hydrants, valves and other appurtenances. In order to provide the necessary level of service, large construction equipment is necessary. New 2021 CAT 313 GC excavators to be purchased from Michigan CAT using the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract 032119 CAT. Sourcewell is a national cooperative purchasing program that is used by Canton Township to secure competitively bid equipment contracts. Department of Public Works is in the process of all of its heavy equipment needs to cater power equipment due to its excellent quality, reliability and longevity. DPW equipment operators and mechanics are trained and familiar with CAT construction equipment. Jade, is there anything you wanted to add?
Um, nope, that this was accounted for within the 2021 budget.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, Clerk Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
Borninsky.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kate, raise your hand. All right, Kate?
Sorry, um, I just wanted to thank Jade for, um, answering my questions about this earlier. And, um, also, I think it's great that we're taking advantage of, um, the cooperative bidding that, that you did. So, um, anyway, that was it.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, please take roll call on the motion.
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gangool.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segrist, I, Snyderman.
Hi.
Motion passes. Item G eight. Consider approval of the purchase of a CAT GP 25N5 LP forklift.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award a purchase order contract to Frazza for an amount not to exceed $30,742.91 for the purchase of a new 2021 CAT GP 25N5 forklift.
Support.
Thank you. Public Works staff has multiple types of freight received, which requires unloading off of different types of freight equipment, freight vehicles. Public Works is moving to all CAT equipment due to its excellent quality and DPW operators and mechanics being familiar with CAT products. And you can see that, um, that was under strategic plans, quality infrastructure. Are there any, um, questions or comments? Or Jade, do you want to add anything?
No.
Questions? Michael?
I have a question. Is Frazza, they, they have a facility over on, um,
Canton.
Free road here in Canton Township, don't they?
Yeah, on Commerce Boulevard.
Commerce Boulevard. Well, awesome. I'm excited that we are able to, if this passes, excited that we're able for, uh, township, uh, business.
That's right. Anyone else? Okay, Clerk Segras, please take a roll call on the motion. G eight.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segras, I, Snyderman.
Hi.
And Borninsky.
Hi.
Great, motion passes. Item G nine. Consider approval to extend agreement with the Nankin Transit Commercial Commission and approval of the municipal credit agreement with SMART.
All right, madam supervisor, this is in the form of two motions. I move to approve the auto renewal contract agreement and letter of acceptance with Nankin Transit Commission for an additional three years.
Support.
Thank you. In August 2018, the township entered into a three-year agreement with Nankin Transit Commission to become the service provider for the Canton Mobility Transportation Program. The initial agreement is set to expire and has an annual auto renewal option with a letter of acceptance. The Canton Mobility Transportation Program provides curb-to-curb transportation service for Canton's older adult population and individuals with disabilities. Prior to the pandemic, over 18,000 trips were provided yearly. The number of trips declined from March 2020 to March 2021, but they are steadily increasing back to pre-pandemic numbers. Currently, over 200 trips are provided daily to residents. Leisure Services is requesting the township board to approve the auto renewal contract agreement and letter of acceptance with Nankin Transit Commission for the next three years. Additionally, the township submitted its annual municipal credit program application with SMART to provide funding for the Canton Mobility Transportation Program. SMART has notified that it is eligible for $88,692 under the program from July 2021 through June 2022. Leisure Services is requesting the township board to approve the municipal credit funding agreement with SMART and to allow the municipal credit funds to be transferred to the Nankin Transit Commission to manage the Canton Mobility Transportation Program. John, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, but I'm happy to field any questions anyone may have. I know everybody is kind of varying, uh, history and experience with this program. So would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Tanya?
So, um, I was just curious. I was looking at the financial numbers. So is it mostly supported by different type of grants that we get? Uh, make a matching contribution?
Yeah, this program right now is, uh, significantly supported by the general fund.
Okay.
Grants we receive, the, the municipal service, municipal credits and, um, and the specialized services grants do offset some of it, but it's, uh, it's about 160, 170,000 of the $427,000 program. So it, it is heavily supported by the general fund. And that was a decision, uh, made decades ago to opt out of, uh, uh, the SMART transportation program. So as an opt-out community, Canton kind of saved, and not saves, but holds back a little over $2 million a year. And this is the alternative service that we provide, uh, to, uh, as a result of opting out.
Okay.
Lots of general fund dollars for this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Kate?
Thanks. Yeah, I just want to say that, um, programs like these are so important for our community. You know, my mom is older now and she, um, although she lives in Massachusetts, she is relying on transportation services like this to get to appointments and things. So, um, I am really happy that we live in a community that, you know, if we're not going to have, um, public transportation for all, at least we do have this kind of service for, for our older adults and for individuals with disabilities.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I just was.
My God, sorry, Michael. Yeah.
Well, I also saw Stephen raise his hand too.
No, I saw you first, Michael.
John, John, just out of curiosity, if ridership fell during pandemic, how did, uh, how did individuals that we serve through this program get what they needed? Do you have any insight into that?
Yeah, so I think what we saw happen, excuse me, was a lot of the, just like us, right? A lot of the rides that were reduced for those to, uh, for shopping trips, uh, kind of social visits, if you will. Um, the beauty of the service was that we were able to continue providing rides and services to those who needed treatments, you know, cancer treatments or medical appointment. Uh, all of that continued throughout. So while we did see a huge reduction, it was mostly just like us, right? People kind of reducing their trips out, uh, for different reasons throughout the pandemic. So we've certainly seen this, the numbers are spiking right back up as far as ridership goes and people are really getting out and utilizing it more. Um, so a- again, it was really a kind of a nice, uh, blessing to be able to have the service for those who needed to, to, you know, continue getting treatment as, as the pandemic unfolded. You know, people made less doctor's appointments, we all know, right? They deferred a lot of appointments and things, but certainly on the rise again. And, and I would just, you know, agree with what Kate said, this, this program is, is a life send for so many, uh, so many people. And it's curb to curb and you don't get that anywhere else. Somebody pulls right into your driveway, right? And brings you back home. Um, the service Nankin, we switched when Huron Valley notified us that they were going to end their contract with us after almost 20 years. And, uh, Nankin stepped right in. They've had great leadership since 2016. And, uh, our, our clients, our residents are very happy with this program. Uh, after the first month or so of kind of easing into the transition, we've heard nothing but extremely positive things. So it's been a great service. I'm proud to be part of it. Treasurer Slavens has also joined me now in the commission and, uh, again, this is, this is a great program. I'm, I'm very proud of it. And over 1,300 Canton residents have used this program at any given time at its peak. So we actually anticipate that number to go up. These numbers have trended up and up and up. And as we know, the demographics of our community are going to continue to support that. So I, I believe we will truly need to consider, uh, continue to fund this and consider some growth opportunities as well.
Actually, in adding what John said, we also during the COVID, they were giving, um, rides to up to school craft even from Canton. So Nankin got funding for that and they were, with all of these communities, they were doing extra work to get people to vaccination sites too. So they did help with that.
Yeah, it's been great. And this, for any showing we need for events, uh, not just, you know, unlimited to just, just this program. They've, they've provided, uh, you know, transit whenever we've needed it for other events as well.
That's awesome. When I, when I think about, you know, you talked about this program's reliance on, on general fund money. I, I, I'm hard pressed to find a more worthy program that we do, um, that's reliant on a general fund. And, you know, I'm, I'm a big fan of, of this program and it's definitely something I don't lose any sleep over that we put money into.
Yeah, my, my humble opinion is, is definitely the best dollar for dollar investment to make in this community.
It really does. I mean, people, some people couldn't, could not, they, they could not live as comfortably as they did or stay as independent as they do without the service. So it's, you keep people, a lot of people in their home and that's awesome.
Yeah, it's one misconception is that I, I don't think people realize how many, uh, folks use this service to get to work and back and forth every day. Number of riders who, this is getting them to their career, their profession and, and for their income. So it has, there's a huge variety of, of uses with this program.
Stephen. You answered my first question, which was how is this service doing since we switched in 2018? So thank you for that. Um, I think that in the past, we've talked about and may even be one of our board goals that we set last spring, um, to look at expanding it in some areas. And, um, one I can remember is something, uh, you, uh, madam supervisor brought up about people who walk, uh, to connect to the SMART system into the next town through down Michigan Avenue. And whether there's a way we can service them and what the cost would be to do that and would it actually be utilized? And so, um, I'm still interested in understanding all that, whether it's something that would be recommended. You know, if you told me it was $50,000 a year to add a shuttle in the mornings and the evenings to and from, uh, Garden City or Westland or wherever it is that they're catching the SMART system to go to their careers downtown uh, in Detroit or Dearborn or some other places, um, because they are people with low income and they need, they, they would need public transportation. And especially in the winter, I hate thinking of them walking over, especially under 275. So, um, you know, it's just something I'm still interested in pursuing. Otherwise, I think it's been a great partnership and I'm glad to approve it tonight.
Come, thank you. Tanya?
Yeah, I, I just heard what Stevenson and I also, I'm very interested in, you know, finding out if that is an option that we can add in the future or what is the financial viability of that? Uh, because when I was working in Detroit years ago in the summer, I used to take the bus from Bassland. But we have, have our own cars to get to Bassland, but so, uh, some people don't have that option.
Yeah, N- Nankin does offer connector service, so, uh, you know, you could, as a rider, you could get service from your home to a site, to a, to a bus pickup to get downtown, even though they're not in Canton. The beauty of when we went to Nankin was that it, uh, also gave us service areas in the Garden City, Wayne, Westland, Inkster and a missing one.
But is it for only those, um, special groups, the scene? Yeah.
Currently, right. So it's not for the general public.
Yeah, so this, this would have to be something we'd look at for everyone and it would be very specific. If you can, if you're on Michigan Avenue today, maybe, um, you, you can still get to Michigan Avenue, but it would still be helpful. Um, so, yeah, it would be an expansion of service, I understand. I'm just interested in continuing that discussion.
One of the things we're working at and, uh, we've been talking with madam supervisor about is pulling forward our, uh, transportation strategic plan. So we're going to start that this fall and that will allow us to vet some of these options and kind of get some community input and find out maybe what the need is and, you know, go, go through that process. So we're looking forward to that.
Anyone else? Clerk Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
All right, Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segras, I, Snyderman.
Hi.
Minsky.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. My, next item is G 10. Consider.
Our second motion, we have to.
Sorry, forgot about that one.
It's okay.
I hear this have a, um, second motion, please.
My apologies for interrupting.
No, no.
Supervisor, I further move to approve the 2021, 2022 municipal credit contract between SMART and the Charter Township of Canton for $8,692 and to authorize the supervisor to sign the contract on behalf of the township.
Support.
Any discussion on the second motion?
Just a ditto of everything that was said prior about the Nankin Transit.
Okay. Clerk Segras, please take roll call on the second motion.
Gang.
Hi.
Remember where I'm at. Ganguly. I'm rotating.
Yeah. Hi.
Deck.
Hi.
Segras, I, Snyderman.
Hi.
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
We're keeping us on our toes because I'm always used to hearing Snyderman and then going. We're keeping us on our toes because I'm always used to hearing Snyderman and then going on. G10. Consider approval, Board Policy TB01, Canton Township Standards of Appearance, Board Approved, or Repealing Human Resources Policy, HRO2, Standards of Appearance.
Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt the recommended new policy, TB, or Township Board 1, and repeal the existing human rights, human resources policy, HRO2, General, Generic Standards of Appearance.
All right.
Thank you. To establish standards of, standards of appearance and grooming that promote a professional and inclusive work environment for employees who do not wear a uniform, Supervisor Graham Hudek asked Clerk Seagres and Trustee Borninsky to serve on an ad hoc review committee to make recommendations on updates to HR Policy O2. The committee was tasked with aligning the existing policy with the board goals of organizational climate and culture, welcoming community. As such, the following recommendation was created to remove gendered language standards that could be racially or culturally restrictive in a more relaxed environment that still maintains professionalism. It has been reviewed by senior staff at a leadership meeting and additional recommendations have been included. Clerk Seagres, do you want to add anything?
Um, I don't know if Trustee Borninsky has anything she would like to add. We serve together on a subcommittee to look at the existing standards of appearance upon the request of the Township Supervisor, myself and Township Treasurer, to make it align with the board goals as approved earlier in this year. And this is the final result. Kate, do you have anything you want to add?
Um, well, I wanted to thank you, Michael, for all the work you did on this because you did the bulk of it. And while I think we were pretty well aligned on what our vision was, I merely did some tweaks and I think you really put together a, a recommendation that, um, in a policy that I think we can all live with. And I think it's, it's much less prescriptive than what was in place before.
Yeah, thank you very much. If you look at, there's a second document that attaches the red line version that shows what's been removed in red with a cross through it. You have the green version of what has been added to it. And again, everything that Trustee Borninsky stated, the idea was to eliminate the specificity and to go with a more broad and kind of intentional examples of what would be inappropriate, removing some of the grooming standards that were there. Tattoos, jewelries and piercings, language about the differentiation between a man and a woman could fall into legal scrutiny and really put the onus on the employee to kind of meet those standards and the direct supervisor to kind of enforce those standards. And then the denim day policy. We just felt like removing that entirely from the policy because it's, it's really just a description of how the supervisor's office handles denim day. And it felt out of line in a, in a, in a, in a policy about standards of appearance. So that kind of covers all of those specific changes. I don't know if there's any questions.
Summer?
Not a question, just more of a comment. I just wanted to thank Trustee Borninsky and Clerk Seagres for their work on this policy. As I've seen in, in, in recent years, that a lot of times when organizations have dress codes, they're policed more on women specifically and people of color specifically. And so I think amending this dress code takes a lot of the subjectivity out, which was in the original version of the dress code. I mean, and when I was reading it, it had like, women could have so many piercings in their ear. Men could only have one. Beards need to be groomed neatly. And it's like, who's going to please what, what beards are, are groomed and how they're groomed? So I appreciate your work on this and I think that it would make a better working environment for Canton Township.
Thank you. Tanya?
Yeah, I really appreciate Kate and Michael working on this and sending us to us for some feedback. And we had, we really liked all the, it, that it was not restrictive, but more inclusive and it, you know, and more gender neutral. And I really liked how we didn't mandate, as Summer just said about the piercings, because, you know, the, the trends are changing in society and the community and, you know, and with people from diverse cultures in our community, we really cannot mandate how many piercings they can have. And I really like that we have made this more inclusive and less restrictive. So thank you, Kate and Michael for working on this. I really appreciated bringing it to the board.
Thank you.
I was just, I agree with what everyone said. I just found a typo just as I was sitting here in section two, first paragraph of under procedures. And it says clothes shall be clean, but it says closes shall be clean. So.
Never, you know, Trustee Borninsky found that as well.
Oh, okay.
And.
I found it twice.
Where are you at?
Right under the header of section two procedures. In, in, I'm looking at the marked up version. So I don't know if.
Oh yeah, that's, I never, I didn't change it in the red line. Called by Trustee Borninsky and subsequently changed.
This is in the green though. This is in the new stuff. So, okay. Sounds like.
The final policy though should not have it.
I'll go back.
It does not.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
We had to amend the dress code, Stephen, so that you could visit with your COVID hair and.
I was, I was glad to see that the long hair is now valid.
Yeah. If you look at page one of the, um, TB01, that is incorrectly.
I see it.
Oh yes. Yes, we made that change.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Oh, thank you. So Clerk Seagres, please take roll call on the motion.
All right. Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Snyderman.
Aye.
Borninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G11. Really big. Consider approval for deputy supervisor position. I have a motion, please?
Yes, let me. Oh no.
Uh oh.
My PDF.
Oh.
Is, um, my PDF, it shrunk its 28 points, 23.1% and then I'm getting the spinning wheel of death.
Uh oh.
I'd be glad to read it.
Will you read it? Because, you know, I don't want to lose my notes.
Um, I will, in fact, read it in one motion. How about that?
Okay.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the position of deputy supervisor and authorize the township supervisor to negotiate the starting salary within the approved budget. And I further move to approve the following budget amendment based on the estimation provided by Novak Raftellis for the salary and fringe benefits for this position prorated for the remainder of 2021. Increase in expenditures, salaries and wages, full-time $60,000, fringe benefits $33,000, fund balance appropriation $93,000 total for increased revenue.
Support.
Thank you. The Canton Board of Trustees approved an organizational assessment by Novak Raftellis in February of 2020. On that assessment came the recommendation to create and fund a deputy supervisor position to supplement the increased responsibilities of the supervisor's office. The successful implementation of the organization-wide initiatives identified by the board and described in this assessment will create a need for a high-level project oversight and management capacity in supervisor's office. In addition, it is important to ensure that the township supervisor's span of control is reasonable and allows the supervisor to focus on broader strategic issues, community relations and board relations. Once approved, the annual increases of this position will mirror the process for the elected officials, which is approved in December 2020 to follow the annual board approved increases for the mayor employees. Are there any questions? I'll start there. Questions or comments? Stephen?
I'll, I'll make a comment. Um, I think that our organizational assessment very clearly showed that an organization for a community of our size, that it is completely appropriate and almost standard to have such a position in our supervisor's office as well as some of the other offices that were outlined in the Raftellis study. So I am perfectly comfortable with this. I also know from some of the budget work that we've done recently that there are funds available, there are positions that we have considered outdated that have been eliminated and the funds are available to do this. And I think it's a really appropriate use of those monies to move us into the, what's now 20 years into the 21st century. So, and, and, and we should have been doing this a long time ago.
Thank you, Stephen. Anyone else? Summer?
Um, I agree with everything that Trustee Snyderman just said. I know when we got the report and were presented the report from the Novak Raftellis, am I saying that right? Group a couple of weeks ago, I articulated some concerns that I had with, with our priorities and how it fit into our budget and things like that. So I just wanted to thank trustee supervisor or trustee, I'm sorry, supervisor Anne Marie Graham Hudek for going through that with me and, um, you know, reassuring me and showing me, um, you know, how it fit into our overall plans, how it fit into the budget, all of that good stuff. So thank you to Anne Marie for taking the time to do that.
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah. Um, thank you, Madam Supervisor. I was excited to see this come out as a recommendation from the report because I think the largest culture shock I, I had in 2016 coming into this organization was that there was not an unelected individual supporting the supervisor in administering township government. As much as I love being the clerk and think I am awesome and qualified to do my job, I was not qualified on day one. And township positions are interesting. You know, you get elected to state legislature, you don't start until January. You get elected president, you don't start until January 20th. If you get elected to county government, you don't start until January 1st. It's not the same case for township positions. We get elected in November, first week in November, and we take office November 22nd. That is not a long time to learn how to do all of the statutory duties that we learn. And luckily, um, you have time to learn. I didn't. I got thrown into a, well, this isn't about me. Anyway, there was a recall election. I had to jump into it. My point is, um, thank God I had a deputy. I had a deputy clerk. Thank God Diane had a deputy soup, had a deputy treasurer. And the weirdest thing for me was that there was no deputy supervisor. And the weirdest thing to me was that we did not have that, that position at the top, that kind of chief of staff or whatever you want to call it, that director of operations, whatever function that that, that that occurred, that, that bureaucratic layer between the elected official and the organization itself. And having had numerous conversations with individuals in the, in the industry, was abundantly clear that Canton Township was the outlier when it came to that. And so this has been long overdue. We've been fairly successful, I think, over the last five years that I've been around. But I can imagine we could have accomplished so much more had we had somebody in there assisting in this way. So I look forward to that. I also know that the, the board is an ambitious goal. Has a lot of ambitious goals and the, you know, that one resource that is the most challenging is the human capital. And, um, you know, we like to ask systems and people to do more with less, do more with less, do more with less. And our current staffing in the township is a direct result of that. We experienced a recession and we told everybody, do more with less, do more with less, do more with less. And it's harder than when you have to scale up and start funding the positions to make things certain priorities. It's a, it's a hard culture shift, but, um, you know, we've got the, the budget for it. And clearly the professional recommendation is to go forward and I support that. And I'm glad to see that that made it into the recommendation and I'm glad to see this, this move forward. I assume you have somebody in mind?
Yes, yes. And I've been, we've been working on an employment contract. So definitely. And then we're going to be looking to start at the end of August based upon board approving the employment contract at our next meeting.
Okay. So you've got a posit, you've got a person in mind. Under the Charter Township Act, you would kind of appoint that individual. However, and the board's funding the position right now, but essentially you'd like to have a labor contract between that individual and the township.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And there's a job description. Is that in the packet, if I'm not mistaken?
Um, no, we didn't put that, the thing with the job description right now, we're, I think what we're going to do is bring the person in and start going over the goals and everything and where we need some help right away. So that is going to be the primary, primary source of where we start.
Okay. And that's good to know. And do you have the intention of, and we initially had a conversation about some duties that are currently being exercised by human resources being delegated to this position. Is that still the intent?
Yes, it's still the intent. Correct.
Okay. That's good to know. When do you think you'll have the contract?
Oh, well, our next meeting, probably at our next meeting, definitely. Now we can, because August, there may be a, we don't have a meeting, probably August 10th. At the latest. So I will be able to review that. I will, the board members will be able to see that and ask any questions that they have beforehand. But this approves the position and the goal and the, um, the funding.
This is a merit position or?
It's a non-merit position. So unlike, yes, unlike the deputy supervisor for the clerk and the deputy supervisor for the treasurer, they are merit positions protected by the merit policies. This is a non-merit position. So it's a little bit different. And so that's why we're establishing an employment contract.
Is the, is the, this is the only position in the township that is not elected, that is an unclassified position?
Correct. Correct. This will be unclassified. Correct. Yes.
So I, because I know Diane and the deputy from, for this clerk and the deputy for the treasurer doesn't necessarily have to be a classified employee under the merit ordinance. However, we have, as a past practice, have done that before to insulate those positions from the transition, right? So when I took over, I, I inherited Terry Bennett's deputy and, and vice versa. Diane inherited Melissa McGlothlin's deputy. So that's not going to be the model that you would be using for the deputy supervisor.
Correct. So they would basically, their appointment would end when I, my, my office, my term of office ends. So it, the first one will only go to 2024.
It'll be the expiration of labor contract. Okay. That satisfies my questions.
Thank you. Kate?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to echo what Summer said and also thank you for answering the questions that I had about organizational assessment in particular. Um, so thank you for spending your time with me.
Oh no, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, great. Um, Clerk Seagres, please take a roll call on the motion.
Seagres, aye. Snyderman. I saw your mouth move, but I didn't hear it. It's not going to work until you. I saw your mouth move, but I didn't hear it. It's not going to work until you.
Sorry, I couldn't hit the spacebar when I wasn't on Zoom. So now I will say aye.
Borninski?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item, thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is public comment. So I'm going over to the attendees. If anyone would like to publicly comment, you can raise your hand. And there are no phones, so it would just be a hand raise on your Zoom. Any public comment? No public comment? Any public comment? No public comment? Great, thank you. Is there anything else anybody else wants to talk about? We do have, just to let everybody know, we have the Punjabi festival in Heritage Park. It's this Saturday until 5:00 PM. And on August 3rd, there's a pavilion ribbon cutting over in Preservation Park. Does anyone have any other things to add? Any events coming up? Oh, actually, and there's the night out also with CCIC. And Chad, do you want to talk about that for a second?
Sure. August 5th, we have a national night out. We're also having, the CCIC is hosting an event with leisure services. It's a walk around the globe, so it'll give an opportunity for people to learn about their neighbor, where they're from, and be a great event for our community to learn about each other. So it goes back to the CCIC, which was formed, their police department, and now is expanding to help align with some of our board goals, which is inclusive community. Learn about each other during that event, for National Night Out.
Right, thank you. A lot of good, uh, good diverse celebrations. Kate?
I think Tanya hit her hand up first.
Oh, sorry, Tanya.
Okay, so I just got an email from John yesterday about planning for the Diwali Festival, and we are planning to do something for the Diwali celebrations in November. So I'm very excited that we are bringing this into our different celebrations that we are doing in the community for, and going with our board goal of inclusive community. So I'm looking forward to what we have planning the next few months.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very excited. I just want to add to the Partnership for the Arts is hosting an evening for the arts on Thursday. So I know several of you have mentioned attending. If you haven't purchased your tickets, we'd love for you to do that in advance. Again, it is Thursday night at the Villas Theater. Got a great lineup of auction items. It's going to be a great fundraiser for the partnership and will help us kind of continue the endeavor in the village. So please get those tickets if you haven't already.
Thank you. Kate?
So, um, I'm not sure, Anne Marie, if you mentioned Bites at the Barn after the cutting at the pavilion. But I have my tickets, so I'm hoping that I will see some of you there. I also wanted to thank Leader Services, John and Greg, for sending that comprehensive list of events that are coming up, because that was really nice to see.
Yeah, I liked that, too. I liked having you as well. And I work there, so I can imagine it's very helpful for many people.
Yes, thank you. And we'll update that as that, as any big events come up, you know, come up, we'll add that. Michael?
I would like to, one item I want to talk about is, I believe we have a regularly scheduled board meeting on November 2nd, which is going to be an election in a neighboring community, and I would like to to assist. So if it's possible to get, I don't know if that's typically around when we would be doing our 2022 budget approval or tax setting, but if it's possible for us to kind of front-load some of that work so that we might be able to cancel the meeting that night, would be a request I might make. Or just to start thinking about it, I want to drop it on the radar now, and I might be off, it might be a study session, I just.
Yeah, I think that is a study session, isn't it? It's the first week of November.
Wendy?
We have to adopt our taxes by September 30th, so that will definitely happen in September. And the budget, typically do a study session on our budget, you know, at the end of October, sometime in November, and we really have until the end of December to adopt our budget. So we can take that to the second meeting in November for sure to adapt it, Anne Anne's perspective of both of those items.
Thank you. Sorry, there's a connection issue as well, but I heard that last, especially about the, so we don't have to worry about taxes and the budget. We have plenty of time.
Yeah, I apologize. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, great.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, we typically take our budget to a study session at the end of October, beginning in November, and we don't typically adopt the budget until the second meeting in November anyway. So we have some time. We don't, we're not required to adopt it until the end of December, so we can definitely be flexible with that, from the finance department's perspective.
Beautiful. The other item, we met today with, um, with CISA, the federal, it's the cybersecurity and infrastructure security administration, federal bureau under the Department of Homeland Security, went over our approach at looking at some assessments of the township's systems from an election standpoint, from a public safety standpoint, so on and so forth. And so currently, IT will be working with the cybersecurity end of it. Public safety will be working with the infrastructure security portion, especially as we talk about, and Jade, you'll be looped into this one, I think, too, with, through chat, and when we talk about the the security measures in the back lot with regard to the fencing that we have talked about putting up. So other than that, I think one of the goals would be for the leadership team to internally talk about it next week, but I wanted to let the board know. One, we met, and it started as solely an election security conversation, because under federal law, elections are considered critical infrastructure. And so we fall under the CISA jurisdiction. And when public safety found out, and some in IT found out, we were having the meeting, they were very excited to get involved. And so it expanded, the scope expanded, so we'll drop it to the leadership, too, and talk about what that looks like. It's minimal work on our hand. They have pretty aggressive timeline, and they have said that it is impossible to meet all of the security standards, because it would be, you would be so overburdened with inefficiency, because you'd be complying with all of these standards. It would make it impossible to function. So they said, don't have any, any issues around humility, around failure to meet some of these security standards that they have, because of how exhaustive they are. But we're pretty excited about that, definitely excited, and great to meet the team. There's a new regional, some new players in that realm. And that's one. And then two, I was, got some notification that I was accepted. I had applied for a, an election certification program through the University of Minnesota. I was notified today that I was accepted into it. So that was exciting news. I would, you know, at some point be looking at bringing an RBA before the board on that issue. It's just, you know, and it would probably take between, probably take around four semesters to get, to get the classes done. And we'll talk about that at some point. I want to have do a bit more conversations with individuals prior to that, but I would probably be bringing in an RBA to the next board meeting.
Great, thank you. Congratulations.
I'm pretty excited about it. You know, we've aggressively leaned into as much training as possible, especially around elections. It's part of the reason why we're also engaging CISA, because, because in the past, people treated elections like they were fun civic events, and nobody was freaked out about it. Nobody, you know, 2000 was a stressful election that put some strain on the system, but that was nothing compared to the suspicion post 2016 with foreign influence, and then 2020 with kind of the inundation of misinformation and the proliferation of misinformation as it relates to elections. And so as a result, the industry is changing. This program especially was created after there was a, there was a federal commission that recommended universities start putting energy and resources into election infrastructure and election systems for the purposes of increasing the professional development of election officials around the country. There's about 10,000 of us. In some states, clerks are, you know, they're backwater clerks who have no formal training whatsoever, and there's no, there's no requirement for an elected township in Michigan. The only requirement is that you get one more vote than your opponent. And, and so they really wanted to shore up the professionalism in the industry. And so we've aggressively leaned into that here at Canton Township, because we're an organization that likes accreditation. We like to be the best practice, like to set the best practice and continually work in those fields. And so I, you know, I've been doing that with the Election Center currently, and through the clerks' organizations, and this would probably be the most extensive training that we have had, which is why we go to the board. So, yeah.
Oh, great. That's really good. Looking forward to that.
Yeah. And I think we've got money in the budget, which is the best answer.
You'll be the leader for everybody, all country soon.
God help us if that happens.
Anyone?
Want to extend this meeting that much longer, but I did want to say that since we're meeting in person at our next meeting, I believe, I just want to commend Michael for the way he's run these meetings the last 15 months in terms of taking votes and doing roll call votes. It's not something that is necessarily easy. I will be glad not to hear roll call votes. And just all in favor from Anne Marie.
That's right.
That will be a welcome change after over a year of doing it this way, and the rare occasion that we have to do roll call votes, I think I'll get a little chill or shudder or something like that. I imagine that when Lindsay asked him to pass a roll across the table, he gets a little PTSD these days. So I'm happy for you that hopefully permanently won't have to do that for every vote.
That's right. That's going to be different. Kate?
Yeah, and I'll say, this, the way you were doing roll call votes this meeting was excellent. I really enjoyed not being first every time. And so I, too, am looking forward to getting rid of roll call votes, because why, the pressure's really on when you have to go first.
Can I just add to that? Like, when you're in Adobe, it's really hard to unmute yourself to vote on a thing, because you can't just push the spacebar. You have to switch back over Windows. So I will be happy also.
Don't have to deal with that anymore.
Thank you. Yeah, Stephen. I remember the one meeting where I had a delay, and I was trying to time the delay so that I could start speaking while somebody was finishing speaking in order to keep the meeting moving, because I was on a network that had horrible broadband, you know, or a bad, horrible bandwidth. So, thank you for, and then, yeah, I actually talked to some other clerks, and I found out that other municipalities were rotating every roll call. And so I thought, yeah, let's give it a shot.
Yeah.
You know, so.
That was fun.
Yeah. It's a cognitive test, too, to make sure I'm paying attention to who went last, whatever. Anyway.
League of Women Voters Forum debate, that's what it was like. Anyone else? Summer?
I will just add this really, really quickly. Supervisor Graham Hudek, Director Baugh, and I had a meeting, I think it was last week, with the Transparency and Guiding Subcommittee, the advisor. And it was a really good meeting. They've set up the training schedule. The subcommittee is eager to get to work. And so I'm excited for what that process will look like.
Yes, me too. Thank you. I agree. Anyone else? Chad, you would put out a note about Officer Lou. In 23 years, you'd put that note out to everybody.
Yes, on August 23rd, 2003, Officer Lou Stevens was killed on Lots Road. And every year, we recognize that, you know, that, and number one, his superstar community. You know, he was in his 26-year service. He was soon to retire. He was actually waiting for a contract to be signed, to negotiate, if I remember correctly. But, yeah, he was doing his job. It was right, later in the day, right after roll call, he came in around 3:00 PM, and he was checking on the vehicle, and he was killed by a driver that was intoxicated. And so every year, we take note of that loss. So thank you for sending out the entire employee group to recognize his service to the camp.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Kind of a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Thank you. Let's see the roll call. Let's see where this one goes in. Can you please take the roll call on the motion?
We'll do it in redescending order. Snyderman? Segrist, aye. Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Borninski?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.